This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called. The notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. I do not think we have anybody signed up for public participation. Is that correct? That is correct. Alright. So, we're gonna move on to our first action item, which is consider approval of the internal audit plan for the year 2021.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Hager and I met with Ms. Coker regarding the internal audit and reviewed it and discussed it. So, it's ready to be presented before y'all, the board, for approval or recommendation that we approve it.
Good deal. Thank you, Ms. Coker. Yeah. Come on up. And for all those watching who might realize Reverend Hager is not here, he is deployed right now helping out with the relief for Hurricane Laura, so.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Well, there are two areas to discuss. The first one is annual confirmation of internal audit services. And the second one is the 2021 Audit Plan and Resource Requirements. So, first of all, as the Director of Internal Audit Services, I hereby confirm the organizational independence of the internal audit activity. Now, the second area, the 2021 Audit Plan and Resource Requirements, as Mr. Newsome already stated, the Audit Committee reviewed the results of the risk assessment and risk-based audit plan with resource requirements on August 24th. Today, the audit plan and resource requirements are being provided for your review and approval. I keep mentioning resource requirements over and over. That's just the hours in the audit plan that are there to perform the work. And right now, that is 1,784 hours. And that is one of the areas I'm also required to discuss with you. So, now I'd like to open up the discussion to any questions you may have on the plan.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the plan for Mrs. Coker? I do. Just in general, when you're putting the plan together, what were the areas that you felt needed to be addressed, you know, moving into this year? And reasoning for that?
Okay. The high-risk areas would be construction and governance. And construction, the reason for that is, is it's a large bond over multi-year construction activity. And so, that was the highest-risk area and have included that in the audit plan again this year. And in the governance area, the Institute of Internal Auditors requires that there be governance audits. And that's an area that I've done at the unit level. For example, like when I look at campuses, there are some questions on the governance of the leadership. But it's time to look at the top to meet the requirements for the Institute of Internal Auditors. And also PMS was another high-risk area. And that's the part that we look at that every year is in the campus audits. So, campus audits, some campus audits are also included in the audit plan.
Okay. Well, that should be an interesting one. Anybody else have any?
Do we have a bond oversight committee like we've had in the past, or is it just internal? We do. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coker. Okay, do we have any discussion about this item? Mr. Newsome, how is your time on the Audit Committee been so far? I'm sure you're...
It's very interesting. A lot of information. I think that Ms. Coker's done an excellent job in her position as the one-man staff. She's very thorough in reviewing things. And I think that we're very fortunate to have her in the, working with the district.
Well, good deal.
I have a quick question. How does this plan compare to last year?
Ms. Coker?
Sorry, I should've asked earlier.
That's a good question. Last year's, we did have, we do have construction audits on it. And again, it is a multi-year construction activity. So, that is comparable to this year's plan. And then we had campus audits. So, campus audits are just, we just put generically campus audits. And then we plan based on the higher-risk campuses, which ones we're going to audit. But we leave it flexible enough in case there's an emergency in the plan, that that plan can be changed. And so, it's very similar in that we have campus audits, we have construction audits, we have follow-ups. Follow-ups are when there is an audit that's done in the past, we go in and look at the responses to the recommendations and go ahead and go in there and look at it again. This year, we performed, I performed a self-review of the internal audit activity. And next year, what will be different with that is we're going to perform a, I'll perform an external review. And then we'll have the Director of Internal Audit for Plano ISD come in and do external validation. So, they'll go in and they'll pick areas that I looked at and then audit those areas and validate. So, that will be helpful for y'all to see how the internal audit activity is functioning. So, that is different from this year as well.
How does it compare in the number of hours allocated?
In the different areas? Okay.
I mean, you don't have to go through the whole thing, but...
Well, let's see. In total, the number of hours are the same every year overall. In facilities, in the new construction, it's about 100 hours lower. Campus audits, I believe, are a little lower than last year. We plan on doing two elementaries. And last year, we did a middle school and an elementary. So, middle schools take more time and so do high schools, and the elementaries are less. And then in the governance, governance area, that audit's never been done before. I've searched high and low for audit programs within others ISDs. So, every time there's a new audit, it's gonna take more time for the planning and for preparing all the work papers. So, you always put more time into that. And I think the follow-up area is less this year by approximately, I'm going on rote memory here, maybe about 80 hours. So, does that help? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
No ma'am.
Just in a comment with that, I think the governance audits where you're looking at the board's internal control and procedures, et cetera, is a new thing, relatively new, that you're gonna be doing. So, that, and that contributes to a lot of our time in that hour, in those hours, because it hadn't been done before in regards to a thorough audit of the, of our actions as a board either.
That's correct. And it is required by the Institute of Internal Auditors to perform governance-level audits. And I'm required to follow those standards, so hope that helps. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the internal audit plan for 2021.
So moved.
If I could, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, as having, motion carries. And we're moving on to our continuous improvement portion of the agenda. First, we have a Canvas update. So, this, let me go ahead and make a correction first on Canvas. It's actually just one F. Not like you're canvassing a vote, so we're all getting used to that. I guess there's an acronym that's behind that.
Well, if Reverend Hager were here, he would ask why it is not in all caps.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it isn't, it's not an acronym. It's just a proper name.
Alright.
But it's like Canvas.
Yeah.
So, we thought we'd give y'all this kind of a look at the learning management system, the ins and outs, the, some of the bells and whistles that we're utilizing this year. Again, this, you know, trying to put this together in five or six months has been a chore with some quirks and some concerns there internally, externally, by users, both on the instructional end, on the learning end as well. And even some anecdotal commentary that I may provide, Dr. Hanson may provide, because this is something that is also being used in higher ed. And something we've been using in our dual-credit classes at the high schools, now it's trickling down all the way down to our K, our kindergarten learners. So, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Hanson, let her provide a little bit of a snapshot into Canvas.
So, we're actually showing you live data right now. These are not screenshots or anything of that nature. They're, they are live. And this particular set of data is Tyler ISD. It's the entire district. And I promise I'm gonna try not to just bore you with all the numbers. But this is just the general dashboard up here, and it tells you how many courses. Now, these are semester courses. So, those courses would be courses like speech, or health, or government, or economics, things that are just one semester. And we have 483 of those courses set up. Now, if a teacher, a health teacher teaches seven periods of health, that would count as seven courses. Okay? So, just to help you with that. And we have 108 teachers that have built courses, semester-level courses, approximately 4,500 students that are enrolled in those courses, and 32,000 assignments. Again, if a teacher has, a health teacher has 120 students, then that would, his one assignment would count 120 times, just so you can kind of understand what that number means. Discussion topics are things that are on to the discussion boards. So, that's 3,300 discussion board topics where the kids are talking virtually with each other in discussion boards. Files uploaded could be videos, they could be PDF files, they could be, you know, any file that's uploaded. And the media recordings are recordings that students or teachers have done inside of Canvas to communicate with each other, teach lessons, turn in assignments, et cetera. So, those are, that's, these are semester-level courses. And this data is by day, and it tells us how many students participated and how many viewed. So, if you look on today, for example, which is September 10th, you can see that we've had about 35,000 pages viewed. And that just simply means someone's gone in and looked at them. It could be a teacher, it could be a student, it could be a parent. But the participa, the participation number is what you look at, because that means that someone's interacted with that, with that page or with that video. They've turned it on, they've done something with it. And so, that is, we're halfway through the day, so that's, that's what that, what Thursday looks like. But if we go to Thursday of last week, you can see that there were more, there were 109,000 pages viewed. And I'm looking, what is that, about 2,000 participations there? So, you know, we're getting better, we'll get better participation, it looks like today, maybe if things continue. These are the weekends, obviously. And those may not be students in there participating, by the way. Those could be teachers, those could be CNI staff, it could be me, you know, any of us that are in there working on the weekends. So, so that's what that activity data looks like. And we, we can do, so I also wanted to show you this. So, that, those are semester courses. This is that same data for our year-long courses. Year-long courses would be all of our elementary courses. It also would include things like algebra, where you have to take a first semester and a second semester course, an A and a B. So, 1,200 teachers have set up courses, 17,000 students, and 377,000 assignments. Again, remember, those assignments count for every student that it's assigned to. And then the 8,600 media recordings, which again means either teachers or students are recording things inside of Canvas for the purpose of instruction. So, here we are, looking at September 10th, 11,000 participations. That's the number that we want to look at to see if kids are actually doing anything with the information that's inside of Canvas. And this was our full week. So, if you look at where we started, August 19th, by the Friday of the first week, we had, we had, you know, 31,000 participations. And so, here's where we are now, this week. We also can look at this data by, by campus, so, I'm sorry. So, here's Bolter as an example. And this is, I did semester data, but let me look at that year data for you so you can see. This is Bolter's year-long courses. Middle schools do offer health and some other semester courses, but not as many. So, so Bolter has 63 teachers that are interacting in the courses. And they have 897 students that are interacting, and 125 media recordings. And today, they have had 655 or 35 participations, which means kids are interacting with the material that's inside. And just another peek, oh, I was gonna show you guys this one. Okay, so I did JAC just as a, as a comparison for elementary. All of theirs are year-long courses. And you can see here that they've had 134 participations today. Yesterday, they had 334 participations. My guess is these are the JAC teachers that were involved over the weekend. So, that helps you kind of see what some of that data looked like from the various schools. Also can show you just very quickly kind of what it looks like, what the classroom itself looks like. So, this is a sixth-grade teacher. And this sixth-grade teacher has, you know, her assignment set up. And this is what the student would see. They would see what their assignments are and what their, you know, how to get into them. So, I've got a good example here. This is a Spanish class, and he's recorded his lesson.
Hello, and welcome to my class. Today, we're gonna learn the Spanish alphabet. Right, in Spanish, we have 27 letters, one more than in English. The difference is here, right in the middle, the ñ.
And many teachers, just so you know, are live-streaming these lessons. So, they're, they're recording their lesson as they're teaching it to their face-to-face students. And many of the students are tuning in through Microsoft Teams as the teacher is teaching. Some students are choosing to look at the recording later. Some, some teachers are recording it and then uploading it later for instructional purposes. I have an elementary example as well here. This teacher has set up, this is a math class, kindergarten math class. And she has set it up every day, daily routine lesson, an activity, and a closing activity on that. So, she, on this one, she has a little video that the kids can watch. Again, kindergarten class. And then she has an anchor chart for her lesson and gives instructions on what they need to do with that. And there's a game here that the kids go in and play. Then there's an independent activity, and then there's a closing activity and something for them to turn in to show mastery. So, just kind of giving you guys a little bit of information, we have about four, just right at 5,000 online learners right now, which is down. From the beginning of the year, we were, we were at about 5,600 online learners. So, we have less online learners now than we did on August 19th when we started. So, there's our learning management system. Questions? Things I can help with?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are they able to change from virtual learning to in-person learning in the middle of the six weeks or in the middle of the grading period?
That, we've left that up to principal discretion, depending on class sizes and how that would work as far as the, you know, the spacing, probably Mr. Jones or Dr. Crawford could answer that more directly than I could. But as far as I know, we, we left that up to the principals. Did y'all want to address that differently?
Yeah, this first six weeks, I think we've been very accepting of people that, you know, midterm have tried to switch one, you know, back into in-person learning. I think as the year goes on, it'll be a little bit more, we need to be a little bit more tighter for preparatory purposes. Because like she, like Dr. Hanson just said, you do have some spacing, you have some other logistical concerns about that that principals need to prepare for. But we haven't had anyone, I think, turns, you know, a whole bunch of people away. I think early on, our principals have been very accepting of that. We started out really tight with the protocols, saying that we weren't gonna do that. We were gonna just stick to this declaration that y'all may have heard about this week. But we were able to loosen up a little bit because there wasn't this rush right away. Now, I can't remember what campus it was, but I think they had 75 on the list to come back at the declaration period, so they couldn't really take those back on at one time, right in the middle. So, trying to prepare, you know, give our principals and our campuses the chance that possibly can. But especially those first two weeks, those first week and a half, we were welcoming everybody we could possibly. Our principals and our teachers want them in person. Good question.
Question. Substitute. What happens with substitutes? Are they trained in Canvas when they go into the classroom? What happens when the teacher needs a substitute?
So, if it's a long-term substitute, meaning that the teacher's out for an extended period of time, we do the training in Canvas and we give them, someone on the campus has rights and they're able to get in there and operate just as if they were a teacher. If it's a substitute that's there for just a day, or they are two, then usually we make sure, the campus makes sure that either the master teacher or a team member can get into Canvas and do the things for the kids that need to happen. And all the administrators, master teachers have what we call administrative rights, so they can get in and navigate through all those courses as you saw me just do.
We've had some anecdotal examples early on when we had a, you know, when we started school out, if somebody was in quarantine and weren't sick, or even if they were diagnosed with having COVID, they were actually teaching from home to their class as much as they possibly could, even during that time. They may have not been, I mean, they might have been feeling well enough to actually do that. So, I know that there's a couple of teachers that we had, because they had COVID in their house at the beginning of the school year, that did a great job of still connecting with their students in person while there was a substitute in that room. So, there's all, there's different types of blended models that we're kind of going through with subs.
So, is it ongoing training with Canvas for teachers, or was it a one-time?
Well, we did training in June, and then we did some more training right before school started. And of course, you know, the more you get in there, the more you realize how much more there is to know, right? So, yes, now what's happening is we're deploying people out to campuses to do training for the specific needs of the campus or the grade level. And then we'll, we have another tier, a next tier, so to speak, but we'll wait until everybody is sort of comfortable with this piece.
Yeah, instead of the top-down methodology on that, Ms. Atkins, about you, thou shall be trained at this now, it's now kind of a bottom-up deal. They're actually requesting certain pieces of Canvas to do it. We've got some campuses that just feel like that their media specialist has been able to take them through it, and they're like, y'all stay away from us. We're figuring it out. So, it's just kind of a campus-by-campus need as opposed to the district mandating further trainings. Now, I think the October, we have a PD day in October.
That's later in May, October.
That's later, all later in May, that's right. But we'll be available to do some supplemental stuff on that date if anybody needs it as well.
Well, I personally like Canvas, so I think it's a great tool.
It is. It really is.
Thank y'all for approving it. You know, some of the concerns we've had, especially at the secondary level, like in our advanced courses, they kind of want to know who's in the class. We can't see the class. They feel like they have an unfair advantage. It's funny, the students in school think the kids at home have an unfair advantage. And the kids at home think the kids in class have an unfair advantage. So, that's equitable at least. They all think that they have an unfair advantage. But in saying that, you know, it's funny having to kind of do this. Now, I've got a freshman in college. He doesn't know any of the kids in his online course. So, this is a very collegiate feel, not that we like it. But think about all these people that have gotten their masters and superintendents now. You may be in a class with somebody from Beaumont, somebody from Yakima, Washington, or somebody from Lutersavoka out there by Adeline. That is a real place. So, this is kind of a real-world collegiate experience, at least at the secondary level. And elementary, it's sporadic as far as the experiences go. You know, it's a very asynchronous model that we've got going. We do have some teachers that are very efficient and can proctor their, their learning in the classroom and do their online stuff at the same time. But as you can imagine, as a former teacher, those are not the norms. Those are the exceptions. It's been pretty cool to watch that, but a lot of the learning's doing is asynchronous. It's recorded. They go in after hours and get it done. That's why you, you're probably gonna see a spike in today's learning activities once the parents get, get home and get comfortable and everything gets done. The graph would boost up. So, those are some anecdotal things that are kind of going on right now.
The, it wasn't a seamless transition. I mean, just in full transparency, there were some difficulties with integrating the textbooks and having the textbooks talk to Canvas and also integrating Google. That, that has been difficult. So, I mean, just so you know, I mean, it's, it's wonderful and everyone's working very hard. It has not been seamless. There have been some difficulties with trying to help vendors talk to each other and work, work together, and then, and then just a learning curve for all of us as we're, as we're figuring it all out together.
Yeah, parents, that's been another thing is them getting in there and working with it. Like we talked to, spoke with a parent, a principal spoke with a parent yesterday, didn't even know they could actually get in and view what was going on. And so, you know, the more we can communicate that out, the better, because we don't have anything to hide. We don't mind parents getting in there and watching us teach our classes. I know there's been a little controversy that outside of Tyler. But yeah, absolutely. Get in there, and through Parent Portal, you can get viewing rights. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We encourage that and want y'all to be engaged. For one, that's gonna help the students with attendance, and it's gonna help the students with performance, because progress reports did go out this week. And I think we'll probably get a little bit of a spur on participation and from, from, from performance as well after the, the grades have gone out. Because that is something different than what we did in the spring. The spring was kind of, we felt sorry for ourselves. It was COVID. And we were just worried about getting people across the stage, graduating them, because poor little babies had this thrown upon them. It's a normal school year now, so we do have performance that we're caring about. And we do have outcomes that, while a little bit harder to attain this time, are still important to us as far as progress goes.
We, we have some students, for example, that are getting on and doing their math and art, I mean, their art and PE classes, for example, but they're not getting into their, you know, reading class or their, elementary especially. And, you know, they're doing the fun stuff, what we would, but they're not doing maybe any of the assignments. So, the progress reports will reflect that. And, and it'll indicate on there that, you know, that they're not engaging or they're not turning their assignments in, just as if, if a student was face-to-face, you know. If, if they chose virtual, they still have to be accountable for the work. So, we gave some grace because there were some technology problems and all of that. But at this point, you know, everyone can get in. And we really expect people, if they chose to stay home, to do the work.
Yeah, we're about, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to make a comment.
Yeah, we're about, oh, I'm sorry.
No, my, my comment is just in regards to the parent and, uh, and considering the, the not knowing aspect of the challenge that they would have at home trying to do this and getting on Canvas and everything else, the, the flexibility of the various campuses to allow them to re-enter their kids into the regular classroom. I think that, that's, that's really good. I think that that's a good thing because so many parents didn't understand the impact it would have on their time and the challenge that it would be for them to actually try to do it at home. So I think that the campuses being able to allow them to come back in, if it wasn't a great number at one time, of course, uh, it, it's a great thing, uh, because I think parents really didn't understand the, the impact of it.
Seventy-two, twenty-eight, uh, right now as far as percentages go for in-school versus at-home. That's what it's kind of looking like right now. Started the year out sixty-five, thirty-five. So we've had an uptick in that. Um, if we can keep, I know we're going to talk about enrollment and attendance here. If we can keep everybody healthy and going in the same direction right now, like it looks like we're going to be able to do at least early on, then, you know, we, we fully expect that number to continue to inch upward and hopefully we'll get to eighty-five, fifteen by the end of the year. Remember, um, we have to do this for the entire year. We cannot make a decision as a school system or as a board of trustees to not do the virtual stuff. We have signed on for this for an entire year. That's actually coming out of Austin. So we'll continue to get better at this and provide the supports that we possibly can. Kudos to our principals and our teachers for staying connected, um, because that's really what it's about. The teachers, we got to take care of them and they're working their tails off and they're staying connected. That's one reason, we'll go over this in a minute about our attendance, that our attendance looks pretty good right now with all things considered, the way we're operating a dual school system as far as instructional delivery goes. So they're doing a phenomenal job at those campuses of teaching their in-person classrooms, connected also with the, the, the children at home. And then principal and front office support also doing that as well. So, um, we'll keep monitoring it and, and certainly supporting parents when they want to bring their kiddos back. We welcome that, um, as, as quickly and as possibly as we possibly can.
Mr. Washman, I was. Yeah, I think it's important to point out what a additional burden this is on the teachers this year. Driving around during the day in my job and seeing kids out playing in the street, I'm like, uh, shouldn't they be in school? And then you realize they're probably your at-home learners and, you know, I'm sure they're learning it sometimes, but they're out playing in the street, you know, in the middle of the, it, day. And I just can't imagine the burden of teachers being held accountable if, you know, like you say, if that's not getting done at home. Um, so we appreciate them and I guess the district will, will deal with it with the progress reports and with the sick, you know, when you actually start getting grades and seeing who's doing what. We've got a plan to somehow try to intervene.
Yes. Yeah, and constituent services, we're also deploying those folks out right now too. Of course, we'd like to have about fifty more of them to make their jobs a little bit diff- easier, but they've been looking for no-shows. They've been looking for some of these other children on the campuses, uh, that maybe are not as engaged as we'd like them to be. And so yes, sir, that we, we've got some other folks that are helping that are district staff. I too also go, when I'm driving down the street and I go, I wonder where that kid goes. I wonder where that kid goes to school.
They're just having recess, that's all.
And they're the ones that are ultimately going to suffer, yeah, at the end of the day. You know, they're not getting a year off school, uh, with no harm done. It's.
So can Canvas tell how many minutes a person has been involved or engaged or just?
Not only can the campus tell that, but a parent can. So back to the parent portal that Dr. Crawford talked about. We have about a three thousand student difference between the account, student accounts and the student accounts where there is an email associated with the student account, as a parent email. Because if the parent email is there, then it sends them a message automatically that says, your student hasn't logged on, your student hasn't done this assignment, your student had this due today and it's not there. You know, it gives them all the updates. Uh, that, I can't say enough about how important that parent portal is. Then that, that parent can go in to the class and observe the class the whole time and see how much time the students spent on this specific assignment. And, you know, they may have been in their room for two hours, but that doesn't mean that, we all know, it doesn't mean they were working on their assignment the two hours, right? So the parent portal will give them all that information as well.
I'd like to add my kudos to the teachers and the principals, um, for what an awesome job they're doing. Um, I've always considered myself relatively technological, technologically savvy, but I just cannot imagine. How savvy you have to be this day. So, great, wonderful job.
Repetition helps just like with any other thing that you do. And I think that we'll get better as time goes upon, goes on. I think the initial fear of it, either from the student standpoint, the parent's standpoint, or a faculty or staff person's standpoint, um, is certainly something that was just daunting at first. And I feel like a month in now, we feel a little bit better. I will say this, as we're talking about emails and phone numbers, if anybody's watching out there, um, and is going to watch, please encourage everyone to give us an updated, um, accurate phone number and email. That is, that's, that's the thing that we are having a hard time overcoming right now. And most people, whether it's a landline or a cell phone number, we need to be able to get in touch with you. And, and that's, that's difficult for us right now. That's one of the things that we don't have much control over. Um, and one reason we can deploy out constituent services to try to go locate some of these kiddos. Cause we do have, I mean, we'll talk about, um, enrollment counts here in a minute. We do have some, some deficiencies and just, I call them ghosts. We don't know where they're at. We don't know where they went. Um, they haven't hit the T-Rex system, uh, for, for the new board members. Anytime you go to another school system, um, in Texas and they request, um, records from the previous school year or previous, whenever you went to school, it's a statewide database, database that talks to, to itself. And so some of those kids haven't even hit the T-Rex yet. So they're either here or they're not going to school somewhere. And so it, it's, and it's not just a Tyler issue. It's a statewide deal right now. So we've just got some kids that are not going to school.
Uh, had a few different thoughts generally. Um, one is our kids we're talking about are at-risk kids and, and getting them back. Uh, I know that technology can be magnificent if it's working correctly and everybody knows how to use it. And I'm thinking of some kids that might live either with, uh, parents who just aren't trained in computers or grandparents who just, uh, that's not their thing and we're relying on, on our kids to kind of, um, do their own thing with school. And, and I just know that, uh, some of them are falling behind. I really hope we can get them back in class. And if you're one of those grandparents, you know, or somebody who suspects their child isn't, um, you know, doing all they can during the day, uh, let's do what we can to get them back. Um, the other two thoughts were just on, on preparation and attitude. We hope for the best and prepare for the worst. And we've got thirty percent of our kids doing online learning and I know it's been a bit of a curve. You know, getting everybody on board, hopefully we'll, we won't have to go back and have a hundred percent. But I'm hoping that as a district, you know, we're preparing for a time that hopefully never happens where if we do have to, for whatever reason, go back and have everybody online, that we've learned how to implement this Canvas and, uh, for, you know, and, and learned a bit how to, how to best deliver it to our parents, uh, just in case we have to go back. I hope we don't have to do that. And I would not want that. And then, uh, thirdly, I've been telling my kids at home, your, your attitude determines your outcomes in this house. And I'm hoping that everybody understands from teachers to parents, you know, let's have a positive attitude about, uh, navigating through this. This is not the year for people who are structured. And I know so many teachers love to be structured and orderly. And this is a year where we are pivoting every single week. And so I'm hoping that we can maintain positive attitudes throughout this, um, year so we can deliver successful student outcomes. Um, anybody else have any questions regarding Canvas?
Does not allow for a lot of pragmatism this year, does not. Um, here's my pitch for bringing your kids back right now. Right now, our COVID rate in the district is six-hundredths of a percent. Six-hundredths of one percent. So we're keeping, we're keeping our campuses safe right now. And I, and I know the more you bring back, the likelihood is you go up. But that's the way you got to look at it. What percentage of your, of the, of your school system, of the twenty thousand people that we serve, students and staff alike, are actually ill with this? Now, we understand that there are asymptomatic times and people that haven't gotten tested. But as far as that goes, that is something to celebrate as far as saying that our custodians are doing a good job. Our teachers are doing a good job. Our principals are doing a good job. Our transportation department's doing a good job. So if there is that initial fear, almost into our fourth week now, is that, isn't that right? This is, this is the fourth week. Um, there's some data for you there. So if you, if you are having some, some issues in tackling the online learning and you see that, that your grandchild or your child is not progressing like they need to and you just, you're a little bit uncertain, there's the data for you right there. And we'll, we'll actually be posting this online, um, pretty soon. Certainly, we're not going to always communicate with the media about it because we do think that this is a family issue here, uh, inside of our school system. Not to go sell advertising and make some money off of reporting things. It's about us communicating to our parents and our guardians and our grandparents what those rates are and whether, and so they can make a decision, an informed decision to bring their kids back. And right now, six-hundredths of a, of one percent is where we're at. Um, not cumulative, you know, I, you know, Net Health likes to get up there and talk the cum- the accumulation since March. Cause that big number really does freak everybody out. It's the, it's the active issue. It's the active case. I think we're five-hundred in Smith County right now, um, actively here in Tyler ISD in the twenties. Ten active? We, yeah. Ten to twenty, somewhere in there, active issues. So when flu gets here, I'll take ten to twenty active issues on a day-to-day basis. Uh, cause it, it will certainly be, it, flu's going to hit us because it's going to affect what? Children. It's going to affect everybody, um, uh, even more. So let's, uh, let's just celebrate what we've got right now. Dip your toe in the water. Send your kids back to in-person instruction. We'll take them. We'll love on them. We'll teach them.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other comments or questions about Canvas? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our enrollment update.
So I'll start this off a little bit. Um, down four-hundred-and-eighty-three kids approximately from last year at this time. And just a couple of numbers as we, as we transitioned from the Canvas update into this. You know, a lot of those students are right there in those early ed grades, early ed, um, head start, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten as well. Um, that they make up three-quarters of that, of that four-hundred-and-eighty-three number. And certainly, uh, we are, uh, you know, wanting to, uh, uh, get those kiddos back as possibly we can. And I think the reasoning behind that, um, it's their first battle out of the box. People have been a little bit cautious about the, the health challenges here that we've, we've been dealing with for the last six months. But there's also another thing that's out there. Just, just think about Texas compulsory education law. You don't have to send your kid to school until they're, how old? Six years old, September one. And so parents may or may not be choosing, we really haven't heard a lot about this, but we're suspecting, we've heard a little bit, suspecting that I can wait a year and let this thing kind of calm down a little bit when, in their pre-K and kindergarten years. From an educator's standpoint of you, um, standpoint, I, I do think that we, we'd like to have them back. And, and, and we, we thinking that, that, you know, if you're not going to participate in pre-K and just start off in kindergarten when your kid probably needs pre-K, you're the judge of that. Get them into pre-K. If, um, your child, if you think you can delay your child starting school, you know, and starting maybe school at age six in kindergarten, let's take advantage of kindergarten right now. Cause every opportunity, every age that we get, or every year we get before the age of five is important for, uh, for, for maybe populations that, that don't have the resources to educate their child at home. So, um, we hope that that data that I just presented, the, the, the rate right there will, will maybe, uh, be communicated out to the media, um, and that they will, they will project that out and help us get some of those kiddos back. So again, starting off this year, current year seventeen thousand eight-hundred-and-fourteen. Last year we were eighteen twenty-nine, eighteen. Two-nine-seven this, this time last year. Um, we're down just a little bit. A lot of that in those early education grades.
Okay, any comments or questions about our enrollment counts?
I think that that, the comment about the pre-K and kindergarten is, is important because, you know, when I started the school, it wasn't required that you go until you were six.
Sure.
And, uh, and I think that it's a great benefit to have that, but it really doesn't, I don't think stagnate you academically if you're, if you're, you know, if you get the things that you need in the first grade. So, uh, from that perspective, I think it's good. But I encourage people to, to get their kids in education as soon as possible because it's the foundational years and it's developmental and it's, and it really makes a difference as to how well they can progress in a lot of cases.
Yes, sir.
But it is possible. I survive.
Sure. Absolutely. Um, you know, Tyler ISD, it, it, full-day kindergarten in Tyler ISD district-wide is a fairly new concept. I don't think your kiddos, I don't think it was a district-wide initiative when your kids went through that. Yeah, campuses are two-half-day kindergarten. So, um, we, we were there. The thing that I think that we are really, um, concerned about is the literacy development, the phonological awareness, the phonemic awareness, the things that we've put in place with our letters program, um, that we identified, you know, what's going to be now two years ago. Uh, we've did a lot, we've done a lot of training. Our teachers are getting better at, at, at getting our kids better developed as far as, um, that awareness goes with phonics. That's what they're missing out on. Cause I know as a parent, I'm no expert reading teacher. Um, I probably couldn't survive without it because my mom was a reading teacher. But right now, that's what we're saying. We would love to have them there because there are outcomes down the road that we think can be impacted in a positive manner for each and every child as far as reading goes. And, and that's where we're really concerned. But you're right, um, people can, can survive. Uh, you've done it. Um, my brother and sister did it. And certainly those that are in Tyler ISD is fifteen years ago or eighteen years ago. We've got, we've had good outcomes, but we'd love to have them back because we think that our reading push, uh, demands it, so.
And especially if they're at risk. If you know that they're at risk, that's a benefit that, that they need to take advantage of.
Absolutely.
I'm glad to hear you say that about the phonics because, uh, thinking back, I can, I can remember that that being the most difficult part in my elementary years was getting the phonics and, and everything. So I'm, I'm glad to see that that, it's an emphasis, pre-K and K because that was difficult from my perspective.
Yeah, the brain science. I wish y'all had been on the board when we went through all of this, but the brain science behind reading, um, it shows that eighty-five percent of, of people, um, cognitively can handle reading when provided that opportunity. Ten percent of those, of those that need additional supports can get there. And five percent of, of our, of, of, of humans can have, struggle with readings. Um, but we, that's a big push for us. And, and re-emphasizing that and spending a whole lot of time on that in our early ed grades as opposed to teaching how to tie shoes and, you know, brush teeth and all that kind of stuff. That was the push. Those things are important. We're still doing those. But we've really emphasized the phonics. And getting back to that old-school way of providing kids the foundational resources to be, be good readers, efficient readers, proficient readers.
And it's harder to grasp the phonetic awareness, awareness when you are at fifth grade and sixth grade and seventh grade. And so that's an awesome opportunity that I think they should take advantage of.
Spoken like a true middle school teacher. It's tough to teach them how to read. Yeah. You know, that old saying of you learn, you, you know, you learn to read until third grade and then after third grade, you need to learn how to read. Yeah, you know, that old saying of you learn, you, you know, you learn to read until third grade and then after third grade, you need to learn how to read. I mean, you need to be able to read to learn, to know how to learn. So, um, we, we've adopted that philosophy and would love to see our kiddos back so we can get with them, especially that at-risk kids. You're right, Ms. Atkins. Absolutely. Uh, another piece of information here just besides enrollment, um, is, and usually we're talking about enrollment because we're talking about leveling of classes. Um, it's, it's a budgetary concern as it relates to the twenty-two to one, uh, in our elementary schools. That's part of our District of Innovation. But another piece of paper we have right here as far as it goes is attendance rates over here compared to last year at this time at each campus. And another kudos again to our teaching staff and our principals and our front office staff, um, for ethically capturing this data on attendance rates. In other words, kids that are engaged with our curriculum either at school or at home. Um, there's some guidelines from the state about what, what you do to show that they're meeting that at home as well. And they're doing a great job. It's the teacher's sole responsibility to be able to contact the, the, the children on their role, uh, on their roster. And we're doing a great job. There's a, a dip in one percent variation there. I'm gonna tell you, when they rolled these rules out, when we started the school year out, I really thought you'd probably see a ten to fifteen to twenty percent dip in attendance rates at our campuses. And so, uh, the variation in there as far as funding goes, the state is not going to fund you any more than one percent above what you had or one percent below what you had. Is that right, Tasha?
Yes, but our floor is a little higher than what our attendance is, so we say
So we're, we, we feel like we're in good shape on that. The, the floor that the state set, um, is actually more attainable, um, than, than what we're doing right now. I mean, it's not as attainable, am I trying to say here?
It's higher than where we are.
Right.
So we're more than one percent under that floor.
Okay, good.
So we'll get funding up to that floor.
Okay.
For the first two, six weeks.
Yeah, first two, six weeks. Then after that, it kind of goes back to what we're seeing here and we feel like that's a good number. If we can maintain that and maybe even some variation below that, we feel like we can do that as far as funding goes because that is a, a concern right now with the way the state has set the guidelines up for funding. It's interesting that the first two, six weeks also coincide with elections. I'll just go and say that. Yeah, and there has not been a commitment to go past the first two, six weeks as far as funding goes. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays into that because it, there, there are people struggling. Uh, Tyler ISD is not. Um, but there are school systems, you can think about the big urbans, um, trying to, to find those needles in those haystacks. Um, and they just now started. And some of them hadn't even started in person yet. There's gonna, they're struggling. We, we are actually in a, and I think in a pretty good position. I think the rurals are in a good position, uh, to be able to go find their kids. But the larger you get, the more difficult it's gonna be and that's where a lot of the funding lies. And I'm a little concerned that we haven't had a little bit more, um, consideration from the agency and from the governor's office in regard to funding mechanisms, uh, that are in place. And it, it is awfully coincidental for those first two, six weeks to be the ones that are, um, funded. And then yet there's an election day that's looming out there about the same time that those, that, that, um, that that suspension of normal attendance rules, um, expires. So we'll keep an eye on it. Y'all can keep an eye on it too.
Okay. Thank you for that report. All things considered, district total down just a hair over a percent.
I think so.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty good, in my opinion.
Yep. Some, some years, that'll hit you on the surprise and you didn't expect it.
Right.
Um, we actually thought that we would be significantly less, um, enrolled than we are now. So we feel like we're in a good position to have a successful school year in keeping, uh, students engaged with us.
Okay. Well, uh, we will now go into executive session. I do not know if we have action to follow.
I don't have anything.
I don't think we do. Okay. So we'll, we'll go into executive session now.